The Monday, December 5th, 2022 regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Present.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Heath?
Present.
Counselor Mack?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuzinskas?
Present.
Please rise to recite the opening prayer and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us toward the deeds and sound positions and direct us towards the attainment of good city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city and to so highly inspire us to be made deliberate in unity and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media I'm subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to share, any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 20. We'll begin with the reading of the minutes of prior meetings. There are no minutes. I am going at this time to take item number 10859 out of order, and we'll entertain that item at this time. Item number 10859, a notification of the fire chief's appointment of Joshua Chapels to the position of permanent firefighter. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Chief Lagoy for this communication and wish firefighter Chapels the best of luck and welcome them to Gardner. I move to place this communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Mack to place the communication on file. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. At this time, we will take a brief recess of the meeting to swear in the firefighter, and we will reconvene after the swearing-in is completed and call the meeting back to order at that time.
You ready? You can raise your hand, and then speak after me. I say your name.
I say your name.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I bear truth, faith, and allegiance
And I bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
to the United States of America
To the United States of America.
and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
and will support the Constitution
And will support the Constitution.
and the law thereof.
And the law thereof.
Congratulations.
I'll call the meeting back to order. Public hearings. Item number 10850, a petition by National Grid Coleman Street to install one single-owned pole beginning at approximately, at a point approximately 250 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Coleman Street and Robelarge Street. Install one stub pole on Coleman Street to support P-25 on Parker Street. The public hearing is now open. The public hearing notice reads as follows. Notice to Butters, November 28th, 2022, to Butters and other interested parties pursuant to the provisions of general, of Mass. General Law, Chapter 66, subsection 22. You are hereby notified that a public hearing will be conducted on Monday, December 5th, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in the City Council Chamber, second floor, City Hall, 95 Pleasant Street, Gardner, Massachusetts. Upon the petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid for permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under, along, and across the following public way, Coleman Street, to install one single-owned pole beginning at a point approximately 250 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Coleman Street and Robelarge Street. Install one stub pole on Coleman Streets to support P-25 on Parker Street. A sketch of the proposed pole location is attached for your adjudication, City Council of Gardner, by T.T. Seraphin, City Clerk. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition? Just come up to the podium, just state your name and either your address or the company that you're here from, please.
Mike Masek. Was this thing on?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Mike Masek, 939 Southford Street, Western Massachusetts, National Grid. Currently, Pole 25 is supported by a tree, which is now rotting, dying. There's guy wire and anchor that is supported by the tree. This work request was actually initiated by the city engineer, which brought up safety and to remove this tree, which is why National Grid is proposing to install one sole-owned utility pole, 25-84, to support Pole 25 after this tree has been removed. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Walsh?
No.
Okay, you can have a seat. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone present to speak in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone present to speak in opposition of the petition? Is there anyone present to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Communications from the mayor, orders. Item number 10851, an order appropriating $57,485 from free cash traffic lights, repairs, and maintenance support from the Finance Committee. Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a money order to install traffic sensors at the intersections of Timpany and West Broadway, Timpany, Dyer, and repairs at Main Street and Willow. Right now, the intersection is working on timer system due to failures or other maintenance issues. I'm grateful to have them all work off these sensors. If there are any issues, they would then revert back to this old static timer system. The Finance Committee meeting, Counselor Ron Cormier, asked if they would be able to be adjusted for changes in traffic patterns in the future foreseeing a possible left turn off of Willow onto Main Street, and the system is able to accommodate those type of changes without installing a new system. Finance Committee was in favor, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Derna Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to approve the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Just wanted to further state that in South Gardner, I know there's been a lot of issues taking a left off of Timpany onto West Broadway heading into South Garden Village. The sensors in the ground that are there are actually further up since the intersection was readjusted. And happy to see that this will remedy that problem and those type of problems throughout the city. Thank you.
Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 10852, an order appropriating $156,180 from free cash to Pool Pavilion Project city portion. Report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee is favorable. This is the city's share to complete the project. We approve that the last council meeting for the use of CDBG block grant monies for partial demolition and creation of a pavilion in that area. This is the city's portion. It's a longstanding project. We all agree that it's sad to see a historical, and there's no other word for it, structure that has to be taken down. But because of safety issues, there is no doubt about it. The question came up, even at the Finance Committee meeting, is could the building have been saved? And there have been studies done. Yes, with a huge amount of money. It could have been saved. But the same studies also determined that there would have been very little use for those structures afterwards. And the other question came up, why didn't the city always maintain it? And through the good graces of the family, it was donated to the city. And the city did maintain it for many years. But those of us of a certain vintage recall when Hayward Wakefield provided the heat for this building, a glass roof building that my dad. And years ago, there was a giant chimney. We know this, for those of us around here, the snow never came and never lasted on Park Street. It was a dry spot. The heat was provided when Hayward Wakefield no longer was here to provide that heat. And the city had to start providing the heat. The monies for the heat used up any budget that we had for maintenance. I think it was the beginning of the end in that respect. No real fault of anyone. It was circumstances. But we're very much in favor of this, and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Derna Lawitz to approve the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
Just I have one question. Is this for design, construction, both?
Yes.
Counselor Cormier?
Design and construction. With the CDBG block grant.
Right. The city's share of it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Boone?
Excuse me. As Counselor Cormier points out, we hate to see this go. And, you know, we've tried to save it. And, you know, we were, many of us were donating to funds to try and save the project. And it's my understanding, too, that we're going to try and put up some type of memorial to honor the contributions from Hayward Wakefield. So I appreciate that if that's going to occur. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cormier?
That did come up. Thank you for reminding me. At the Finance Committee meeting, certain parts of the facade and so on are going to try to save historical parts and try to incorporate it in this new structure.
Super, thank you.
To give recognition. And a plaque will be also there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 10853, an order appropriating $6,000 from free cash to City Assessor Department valuation maintenance expense account. Report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. During our most recent property reevaluation, a contractor moved all our records to the cloud. This was a complimentary conversion. While this reevaluation was completed, December 23rd, this will end. City Assessor Kumar has recommended we keep the service as it is quicker for database maintenance. IT Director O'Keefe also said this is a good move to keep this in the cloud. And the Finance Committee was in favor. I move the order.
Motion made by Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Tyros to approve the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 10855, an order appropriating $10,000 free cash to City Clerk's temporary staffing account. Counselor Ron Cormier?
I can make a motion that this be referred to the Finance Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Derna Lawitz to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10860, an order authorizing $107.96 payment of prior year for Airport Department operating expenditure. Counselor Derna Lawitz?
I move to refer this item to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Derna Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10863, an order transferring $36,500 from Veterans Department Veterans Benefit Operating Expenses to clerk-assistant salaries and wages expenditures. Counselor Derna Lawitz?
I move to refer this to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Derna Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Heath to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Ordinance is, item number 10856, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 171, Section 68, entitled Personnel Compensation Schedule. Counselor Ron Cormier?
I make a motion to refer this to Finance Committee for further study and report.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report, seconded by Counselor Heath. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10857, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 428, entitled hawkers and peddlers. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Move to refer the item to the Safety Committee for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Boone to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10861, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 42, entitled One Way Street. Counselor Craig Cormier?
Again, we move to refer the item to the Safety Committee for further study and reports.
Motion made by Counselor Craig Cormier, seconded by Counselor Harder to refer the item to the Public Safety Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Item 10864, an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 171, entitled Personnel Compensation Schedule, Assistant Director of Veterans Services. Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Thank you. I make a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee for further study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Derna Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Ron Cormier to refer the item to the Finance Committee for further study and report. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Appointments. Item number 10858, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Anthony Whitman to the position of local inspector for term expiring November 25th, 2025. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to refer this item to the Appointments Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros and seconded by Counselor Mack to refer the item to the Appointments Committee. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. We have already completed item number 10859. Communication. Item 10862, a measure to request a meeting to be scheduled for the purpose of the State of the City address. Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Thank you. I make a motion to schedule a meeting for the State of the City address.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Derna Lawitz, seconded by Counselor Craig Cormier to schedule a meeting. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Reports of standing committees. Finance Committee. Item 10815, an order authorizing $2,015 payment of prior year for Human Resources operating expenditure. This item was given more time from our previous meeting as we need a nine-tenths vote. This is also a roll call vote. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the expenditure.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Ron Cormier, seconded by Counselor Derna Lawitz to authorize the expenditure. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Boudreaux?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Derna Lawitz?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Public Service Committee. Item 10850, a petition by National Grid Coleman Street to install one single-owned pole beginning at a point approximately 250 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Coleman Street and Robelarge Street. Install one stub pole on Coleman Street to support P-25 on Parker Street. We had a public hearing earlier this evening on this item. Counselor Walsh?
Yes, this matter was addressed at a recent Public Service Committee meeting. The city engineer explained the need for the new pole and kind of restated, as he has in his memo provided to us earlier today, the explanation given by the representative from National Grid. They have a pole that's supported by guy wires that are attached to a tree. Tree has to be removed. New pole would be installed in order to provide support for the actual utility pole. Service Committee voted unanimously to recommend passage of the petition, and I move the petition.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Derna Lawitz to approve the petition. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Committee of the whole. Item 10781, an act relative to establish a special act charter drafting committee. Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to amend the act. To, I'd like to amend Section 1 as follows, that there be established--
Point of order, Madam President. I think the item has to be on the floor before it can be amended.
Okay. Is there a motion? Put the item on the floor. George, Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I move, I move the council to establish the Special Act Charter Drafting Committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Tyros, seconded by Counselor Derna Lawitz to establish the Special Act Charter Drafting Committee. Is there a discussion? Counselor Mack?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend the Special Act. Section 1 to read as follows, that there be established a Special Act Charter Drafting Committee consisting of three members to be appointed by the mayor and two members appointed by the council president, confirmed by two-thirds vote of the city council. confirmed by two-thirds vote of the city council. Said committee shall draft a special act charter for the city for submission to the general court and placement on the municipal general election ballot.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Mack to amend the item, as she said, to add two members by the city council president for the amount of members appointed to the committee. So we're going to vote on the amendment? Councilor Walsh?
I, without addressing the merits of the amendment, I'm disappointed that we are hearing about this, although it was suggested at a prior meeting. We haven't had anything in writing for us to consider ahead of time, to ponder and consider as a proposed amendment, even though the item has been on our agenda for months. And I think it would be wise, I don't know if there are other proposed amendments by other people. I understand that this is essentially to add two members to be appointed in the same manner by the council president as opposed to the mayor. And to add it to make it five, a committee of five rather than a committee of three. But I, it's, I guess I'm disappointed that, and I'd like to know if there are other members who plan to move to amend it in other ways. And if so, if they could be heard, if they could indicate their intention to do so, because if it is, I'm going to move that we refer this back to the council as a committee of the whole, so that we'll have the opportunity to see any proposed amendments in writing before we act on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councilback?
To address the concern, I didn't, I didn't think this was much of a surprise, because as we had, had previously talked about, concern about adding people to the committee. I think that when the mayor suggested three, his three-member committee and who the specific people were, I think some of us, you know, were concerned about the small amount of the committee, and it was discussed then. I have no issues if the council wants more time, but I think, on the other hand, I, whether it's three or five, I'm not just, I personally am not sure why that would need a lot of consideration by people and why this needs to be continually drawn out. This is just to create the committee. This is nothing further than to create a committee so we can start looking into it. This has nothing to do with the mayor's proposals or anything else. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Council Mack? Further discussion? So on the motion to amend the item, again, that there be established a second act charter drafting committee consisting of three members to be appointed by the mayor, and the additional part is and two members by the city council president, and then it continues as it was and confirmed by two-thirds vote of the city council. Said committee shall draft a special act charter for the city for submission to the general court and placement on the municipal general election ballot. So the motion to amend was made by Council Mack. It was seconded by Council General Outz.
Madam President?
Council Walsh?
Did you have this in writing ahead of time?
No. It's-
Take good notes.
Well, the vote is in our, the vote is in our packet.
Yes, I meant the amendment.
Right, and so-
Did you have the proposed amendment in writing ahead of time?
No.
Thank you.
Is there, well, Council Mack, what I read is what you-
Right, that's right. And if you want a copy of what I read, I can provide it to the department.
Okay, so the additional part is and two members by the city council president. Okay. Is there any further discussion? So we're voting on the, we're voting to amend. Okay, the clerk will please call the roll. Council Boone?
Yes.
Council Boudreaux?
Yes.
Council Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Council Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Council General Outz?
Yes.
Council Harder?
No.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
Yes.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
President Kuzinskas? Ten yeas, ten yeses and one no. So the amendment passes. On the motion made by Councilor Tyros, seconded by Council General Outz now as amended. Is there any discussion? So we're voting on the original item as amended. Is there any discussion? Council Boudreaux?
I'm not opposed to a charter drafting committee. We did go through a lot, like this, and it wasn't even two renditions of the council ago. Like, this was fairly recently that a lot of conversation went on regarding this. There was a lot of turnover in between that time, so it seems like it was a little long, longer than it actually was. But I'm not going to be opposed to this, because like a zoning change or the building of a, building up of a parcel, there's going to be checks and balances along the way. Where if the mayor or whomever is supporting this wants a crackpot committee of people to look at the, look at the charter and make a suggestion along the lines of what Mayor Nicholson had proposed, I don't see anything wrong with that, because we're going to get an opportunity to vote it down if we see it fit when it's going to legislature. We're going to get, I believe you get an opportunity when it comes back before putting it on the ballot. So there are going to be checks and balances. This is not just going to be written by this committee and put into action. So I will be supporting this this evening, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Further discussion? Council Harder?
Yes, Madam President. The last time we hired the Collins Center, I believe, to go through the charter, which was, I believe, about seven to 10 years ago. Don't quote me exactly, but they are professionals who know the legalities about the charter. This time around, we are not. The cost now is about $50,000 to do so. I understand we're trying to save money here, but just a short time ago, we've owed $285,000 to redo a park in downtown Gardner. $50,000 towards the city charter seems to me that would be allocating the funds the right way. What has changed? This document has served this city for 100 years. Change shouldn't be someone's opinion or desire. Want is not a compelling reason. So in good conscience, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you, Council. Further discussion? Council Walsh?
I'm not going to recount at any great length the reasons why I'm opposed to this. As I said when it was first brought up, the standard I use for considering the charter revision, the initiation of charter revision, the process, is the need urgent and compelling? In my opinion, it is neither. The one before us is neither. The, the, as Council Harder suggests, the charter we have has served us well for over 100 years, or going on 100 years. There is nothing in it that is interfering with the operations of the city in any significant way. Changes that are proposed by the mayor are primarily housekeeping changes that have not interfered with the operation of the city in any way. There is little, if anything, that we can't do because of the current charter, or things that we have to do that we don't want to do because of the existing charter. Conversely, although the mayor has submitted proposals for consideration, it is wide open once it's there. And any mischief, any potential mischief that is, can be considered by the committee, it has to conduct hearings. It'll be a long, involved process that does come back to the council. But I still think to start the process in view of the reasons given for its commencement are insufficient, in my view, to justify the initiation of the process. So for that reason, I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Council. Further discussion? Council Cormier?
In our meeting of the whole, discussions were held on several issues that could be taken care of by an ordinance change. One being remuneration of a council president if and when the necessity arises for that person to serve as acting mayor, as we know the problem that existed in the past. The other issues that exist in the council and in the charter, frankly, are just what was mentioned as, housekeeping. It's a shame that the state didn't put an asterisk skin when they created the charter that said, when an item is no longer viable or legal because of changes made either on a local or state level, that it just be removed. Now it was, but merely you can do is just ignore it, because it has no value, if you The dangers that we've seen in the past would change actually our form of government. And the potential exists for that. And as been pointed out, for 99 years, I guess, going well onto 100, it's worked. It's worked well. I think we're, I think we're putting ourselves in a dangerous position of putting our community on ourselves. For that reason, I'd rather not support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Council Mack?
I just think we have to remind ourselves that this is a committee to review it. We're not asking them to rewrite it. And as we said, we have, we get a final vote on every suggestion that comes our way. And coming back to the recent history of having two acting mayors and having to have to be reviewed over and over with the city solicitor of what defined a matter of urgency and the ability that that person had while they were serving, I think in itself just springs about some of the housekeeping things that I do think I feel need to be addressed. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Council Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be supporting this vote, interestingly enough, for many of the reasons that my respected counselors have brought up this evening. When looked at in the other lens, makes me want to have this document looked at and make sure that is a gold standard, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, that it's something that we don't have to put asterisks on items, but I think it's something that in 99 years has served us well, but that doesn't mean that there aren't changes and matters that could be prepared for or used differently as the charter committee looks at potential amendments to the city charter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor. Further discussion? Moving to a roll call vote on this item. The clerk will please call the roll. Council Boone?
Yes.
Council Boudreaux?
Yes.
Council Craig Cormier?
No.
Council Ronald Cormier?
No.
Council General Outz?
Yes.
Council Harder?
No.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
Yes.
Council Walsh?
No.
President Kuzinskas? Seven yeas, four, seven yeses, four noes. The motion passes. Unfinished business, the matters for reconsideration. Item number 10798, a petition submitted by a private oversight LLC for an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675, entitled zoning, for zoning acts, Master General Law 40A. Is there a motion? Council Walsh?
Move that the ordinance amendment be sent to second printing and passed.
Second.
Motion made by Council Walsh. Seconded by Council Heath to send the item to its second and final printing and pass. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. Council Boone?
Yes.
Council Boudreaux?
Yes.
Council Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Council Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Council General Outz?
Yes.
Council Harder?
Yes.
Council Heath?
Yes.
Council Mack?
Yes.
Council Tyros?
Yes.
Council Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Eleven yeas. Eleven yeas, the motion passes. Item 10834, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 423, entitled Hackney and Other Carriages. Council Craig Cormier?
Move pass the item and send it to its second and final printing.
Motion made by Council Craig Cormier. Seconded by Council Harder to pass, to send the item to its second and final printing and pass the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item 10849, a measure to adopt a factor for real estate and personal property taxation for fiscal year 2023. Council Ron Cormier?
I make a motion that we adopt the single factor of taxation.
Second.
For the fiscal year 2023.
Motion made by Council Ron Cormier. Seconded by Council General Outz to adopt a single factor of taxation for fiscal year 2023. Is there discussion on the motion? Council Ron Cormier?
Briefly, for probably 99 years, the age of the charter that we have, we've kept one single tax rate. Other communities are actually looking, neighboring communities, at going back to a single tax rate because of the effect it can have on business and industry. We don't have a lot of it. We want to maintain what we have, encourage others, and this is one way we can do it.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Moving into new business, Council Heath.
Yes, Madam President. I just want to go ahead and go say, this is the given season. We've got a lot of organizations looking for donations for the kids, toys, things like that. The Boys and Girls Club, not that I'm rich by any means, I just went over there on the beginning of the week. I don't really post too much on the social media aspect, but I went over there and I donated them a 55-inch TV and a PS5. So now the kids are trashing me, and I got to go in and beat them up over the weekend. So anyhow, there's Toy for Tots, there's definitely, the Salvation Army's looking for ringers over there at the Price Chopper, and I forgot exactly where else they're at. They're not at Walmart anymore, but they used to be. But that's it, so happy holidays to everybody. And that's it, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. No new council business this evening.
Thank you, Council. Council General Outz?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Mack?
No new business this evening.
Thank you, Council. Council Craig Cormier?
I have no other new business this evening.
Thank you, Council. Council Boone?
No new business. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Council. Council Boudreaux?
Nothing really, just I, I hope everyone stays safe out there. There was a pretty crazy public safety call going on last night, and I think our first responders did a great job with keeping everybody safe and handling what they needed to handle. So just stay safe out there, because it's getting crazier every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Harder?
Nothing this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Council. Council Walsh?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council-
And I have nothing. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council. I have nothing this evening. I will entertain a motion on the floor to adjourn after the closing of the conference.
So move it.
Motion made by Council Boudreaux. Seconded by Council Heath. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Almighty Father, who sees over all, as we turn, we thank thee for the opportunity of drawing deliberation and actual witness during the course of this meeting, let us , Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people whose representatives we are, in due hour attend for our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.
Meeting is the end of the day. Thank you, everyone.